Testing. I don't have too much to say tonight, so...
I'm glad to be here, believe me.
Made down. Isn't it Walker?
Nope, switched over to the cane over the weekend. And it seems to be getting on pretty good, so... I was at therapy today and actually as long as you can use it, use it.
Good for you. Upgrade, who would've thought you would've been like so excited to just make some upgrades between a walker and cane?
Not me.
I know, right?
The only thing that scared me was coming up down that. It scared me. So I didn't dare let me. I can do steps.
Well, if that constant down, like to slow that momentum, you just kinda under factor when you walk in, like slow down from the top. But if no one's in the house or if they have like a manual or something, I mean...
I just had him help me. I just parked in the... I asked Joe.
People have the, you know, because some people aren't setting for them. Definitely have that perspective.
How you doing? All right.
Heck yeah. I checked.
My spot?
Your spot. How you doing? I'm not expecting.
Bye.
No idea.
I don't know, I've never done this. That's why I bring my own files.
That's good.
I saw you there. I saw that they added. Actually add.
What do I need to do?
How you doing? For your own version.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, you sign, when you sign in on your own version, then you have like a little...
Hi.
Is there anything shortening? You can have mine.
Share with them.
Okay. I'm not saying anything, but... I got two more papers here first.
Give me one second, make sure I'm ready.
I'm not ready yet.
I'll have something for you too, Mark.
Yep, I got Fred.
Yeah. Yeah, that's mine. Fred?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, very good. We didn't get started yet, we're just getting set up, okay?
Thank you.
I'm trying to get online, I don't know how to do that, so I worry about it. I'm all in here.
You don't, you don't need to see my face, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, I got one. Yes. Sorry for being in stuff. Are we ready? Um...
I can have you back. Just pick it up here. I can handle this, I can do it right. Have you do it back.
Just one more minute here, I'm just... I call the meeting to order for the board secretary to take the role, well, wait, I'm sorry. Before you take the role, I want to welcome Don Hilbinger to the board. Don was voted in at the last meeting to replace Dr. Torrey, and we welcome him to our pain. Welcome, Don. Go ahead.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Jim Bard, present.
Mrs. Erica Berg.
Erica Berg here.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Dwayne Burke here.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Nathan Goats here.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Don Hilbinger here.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Michael Lyman here.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Fred Scott here.
Mr. Charlie Sooters.
Charlie Sooters here.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Present.
Ms. Allison Hunt.
Present.
Mr. Caden Yonish.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our deliberations this evening, let us once again be reminded of our duty to represent all of the children in this school community, regardless of age, sex, race, or creed, regardless of need or ability. This meeting is being livestreamed and uploaded to the district's YouTube channel. May we now have a moment of silence to reflect on our thoughts, plans, and actions on behalf of the students of the Shippensburg School District. And for Er- Errol Floyd Jr., who passed away October 18th, 2021, he was a 1952 graduate of the high school. Sandra Martin, who passed away October 21st, 2021, she was a 1975 graduate at Shippensburg High School. Dale Yoakam, who passed away October 25th, 2021, he attended Shippensburg High School. And Bonita Bonnie K. Acker, who passed away October 26th, she was a 1968 graduate of Shippensburg High School. Move on to the agenda, agenda approval. Before I take any motions to approve, are there any changes to the agenda, Dr. Supple?
Mr. President, several changes to report. If you look through your agenda, board members on item 3CE, superintendent's report, we have our district social workers who will be here this evening talking to us a little bit about some homeless funding that the district is receiving and giving a brief presentation. Item 4C, under personnel. Item number five should read November 2nd instead of November 4th as the start date. Again, that's item 4C5, November 2nd instead of November 4th for the start date. Item 4C, under personnel. Item number seven, we added the name that is missing from the agenda, Danielle Serge is being recommended for employment at a master's, 45, step eight, with a salary of This includes a payout, or with a payout of $2,500 for six days to her current employer. Item nine should, should read, administration recommends approval of the following resignation. 4H should read proposal with Sunrise Computers and Electronics currently, there's a dollar amount listed there at 2,000, excuse me, $27,282.96. We would like to strike that and replace with not to exceed $28,000. That is all, Mr. Board President.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Moved by Mr. Sooters, second. Second by Mr. Bard, roll call.
Mr. Jim Bard. Mrs. Erica Berg.
Yes?
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Sooters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christine. Move on to citizen comments. Just for purposes of clarification, we have two citizen comment periods on our agenda. The first section is for items that are listed on the agenda. If you do have a comment on an agenda item, please come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and whether you're a district resident, and the board welcomes your comment. At the end of the meeting, we have a separate comment section for any non-agenda item, and we're gonna use the same process for that as well. I, I do not see any public comment signed up for any agenda item. Is there any? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports. Mr. Burke, Franklin County Career Center report.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, we'll start with, I think we have a, a few slides. The juniors and seniors at Franklin County Career and Technology Center from the Agricultural Mechanics Program are currently participating in a 30-hour Volvo Assembly Training Program. And hopefully, there, I believe there are two or, two or three pictures, but you, you see them here working, they, they assembled from, from the ground up. The small roller which is used for asphalt paving, and just a very exciting program that I, that I thought you, that I would share with you. And it's really exciting to, to see these kinds of programs that students at the, that are involved in the Franklin County Career and Technology Center can become a part of, to, to actually get actual on-the-job assembly training for one of our anchor employers here in the area, and come, come out of the, the program essentially ready to, ready to go to work at Volvo, and, and some of, some of the students from that program have. The next, the next thing I, I do wanna mention is, is that as we have in the past, we continue to report, the, the administration from that school continues to report continued positive progress as it relates to quarantine days, as a result of the mask mandate and some changes that were made in the lunch schedule and so forth, similar to changes that we discussed and were made within our district. And so what you're really looking at here is, is the, the positive impact that masks make in terms of the spread in that school, according to that school, that administration, and, and this data, as well as the, the benefit from the, the quarantine guidance that comes, that comes from the CDC, which essentially says, if you have an exposure that's in, in excess of 15 minutes, but the students are wearing masks, you do not have to quarantine those students. And so if you look up at the top in the right-hand columns, you see in the week of August 30th through September the 3rd, and the weeks of September 6th through the 10th, in the 6th through the 10th, we lost at that school 679 student days to quarantine, because that's before the mask mandate went in place. That's because there was an exposure, but the students weren't wearing masks, and so all those students were, were at home behind their computer screens instead of, instead of in their, in their classrooms. And then you can, you can look at the subsequent weeks, which is in the subsequent week, that's when the mask mandate took place, and, and you see the numbers there. And I, I took the liberty of averaging those numbers. The, the numbers passed the 679, they averaged 66. So we've averaged 66 student days per week lost due to quarantine, students at home instead of in the classroom after masks, and at the height of the quarantine, we lost 679 student days. And, and so that's 10 times. We had 10 times as many student days lost, students out of the classroom, students behind the, the computer screen. And so I, I thought you would, you would find that interesting. And the, the school continues to, to, to keep track of those numbers, so I continue to report them. And then finally, I would like to mention that the next meeting of the Joint Operating Committee, which is the operating board of the Career Center, will take place a little off-schedule this month. It'll be Wednesday, November 7th, excuse me, Wednesday, November 17th at 7:00 PM, and there will be a Personnel Committee meeting prior to that Joint Operating Committee meeting. And the purpose for that meeting will be to, the Personnel Committee meeting, to, to begin to get into the details around a plan and a timeline for selecting the next director of the Career Center, which is something that we'll be undertaking beginning next year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dwayne. Did forget to announce at the beginning of the meeting, the board did meet an executive session before this meeting to discuss contract matters, personnel matters, and legal matters. I do believe we had two board committees that did meet negotiations and athletic facilities. Does any member of the negotiations committee have any comments? Athletic facilities?
Mr. President, if I could, just a couple of quick comments regarding the, the negotiations committee met, again, with the Teachers Association to work on that expired contract. We are making significant progress, so we're very hopeful. Additionally, on the 27th of October, the Athletic and Facilities Committee met, really to talk about the stadium. Most recently, we've been discussing some of the feasibility study in the buildings in the district, and some of the work that needs to be done there. Most recently, the board expressed an interest at refocusing our attention, or narrowing our attention on the middle school, as one of those buildings with the highest need, with looking to talk about the expansion of the cafeteria area, in addition to some classroom areas, and some site work to revamp the parent drop, drop-off and pickup loop. And we'll hear a little bit more about that later on this evening. But I also wanted to take an opportunity just to highlight some of the work that we're doing with the Athletic Committee and Facilities Committee as it evolves, as it revolves around the stadium concept. And so, Mrs. Woodall, if you would, I believe you have two slides to pull, to pull up briefly. The Athletic Committee, just to remind the board, as well as the, the audience, the board has engaged in a feasibility, and this is a, a separate feasibility study from the study that looks at all of our school buildings, but to engage with KNW Engineering to look at the feasibility of having an athletic stadium at the Memorial Park site, in addition to an athletic stadium at the school district site or adjacent to the school building. So we're looking at both of those models. The committee met with, the committee was presented these very rough, high-level layouts, just to see how things might fit at the, at the field. This is looking at Memorial Park. As you can see, there's a baseball diamond. If you look at the home plate, that sits roughly where the, you know, there's a parking lot and Peace Garden currently that exists in that location. The stadium, for the most part, is, is in a very similar spot to where it is now. The concept was just to move these pieces around to see how they might fit at Memorial Park. You can see there's additional parking that's located where currently the existing pool facility and volleyball court is at, on the top end of this drawing. So that's one concept that is being reviewed. Of course, as you look at the football stadium, there are, there is seating for home and visitors. This is another configuration that sort of flips those, moves the football stadium over toward, I guess that is, is it Park Place, and the diamond over to the location where part of the football stadium currently exists with the volleyball court. Again, some additional parking that sits to the top where the pool area is, and some additional parking in the area where the current football stadium entrance to the complex is. So looking at several designs to see what makes the most sense as far as fitting both the baseball and football. Of course, this would be an artificial turf field with a football area. There are some setbacks that we're discussing and, and working with the borough to see how those setbacks might be able to be altered to accommodate these. That's one concept, and then this is a look at the existing high school complex. You'll see that what this does is it moves a football turf field over to the far northwest corner of the facility area, or, or of the campus. So what you see in the top right-hand corner here would be for football, as well as other sports, soccer that could be played on that artificial turf surface. And then over to the left, that's the existing track which could accommodate, again, field, other sports like field hockey, with a turf field that would be a multi-use turf field as well. So we're looking at a couple of different designs from the committee. I want the public to know this is something that's still on our minds, and we're working in conjunction with the feasibility study that has been done, this feasibility study work that's been done for our buildings. So the idea is that, once we can sort of narrow down where things fit best, or, or how things might look, then the KNW Engineering will work on some rough pricing based on what they see here from design work, to give the board an idea of cost at both locations, one being adjacent to the high school and the other down at Memorial Park. And then also, community engagement. Part of that agreement that we entered into with KNW Engineering was that they would engage with the community stakeholders to get thoughts and ideas and, and hear from the community, the parents, students, athletes, band members, coaches. So those will be, that will be happening, we haven't scheduled that at this point, but once we have some rough designs done as far as what works best, or what we feel will work best, then that community engagement piece will, will come, and we look forward to that. So I just wanted to report to the board a little bit more information on that committee meeting and, and what was discussed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there a way that we can put these diagrams that we just saw onto the district website?
I, I would say that in the next week or two, and I'm looking for Mr. Walker, because there were a couple of suggestions that the committee made to have KNW tweak. So I would say, once we do that, then we can put those on for the public to be able to see them. There's Joe. Is that correct, Mr. Walker?
Joe, what is your feel on the timeline for pricing? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll, I'll just turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Under the superintendent's report, I'd like to begin this evening with some great news, and we have some of our faculty here with us this evening. Dr. Cheryl Slattery is the chairperson of the mini-grant selection for the foundation. And so each year, the Mary Jane Taylor Education Mini Grants Program seeks to, seeks applications from educators demonstrating innovative programming that addresses an identified educational need that will directly benefit the children in our schools. So this year, the foundation has funded over $10,000 in grants submitted by teachers here in the school district. The Shippensburg Area School District Greyhound Foundation is pleased to announce the following recipients of the Mary Jane Taylor Education Mini Grants Program for the 21-22 school year that are with us here this evening. And so I'm going to read these names, and if you're here this evening, if you could come down, I would like to present you with your certificate. First, we have Cassandra Chappell, she's a middle school reading specialist. Emily Dill, Nancy Grayson kindergarten teacher, I believe with us this evening. Melinda Fowler, she's a high school practical arts teacher.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very proud, thank you.
Nathan Galnack and Renee Stewart, high school science teachers. With us here this evening, Greg Herb, a reading specialist at Jamesburg Elementary School.
I'm sorry.
She...
She didn't give me that one, I'll have to, I'll have to take it up, because she wasn't expecting to be here.
Okay, I'm here for another one.
Okay, okay. Mr. Herb, congratulations, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Lindsay Keane, middle school English Language Arts teacher.
Mrs. Keane here? Okay. I didn't see you, Lindsay, so sorry, congratulations.
Carrie Krebs, Liz Parent, and Ted DeWald, middle school English Language Arts teachers. Sarah McClay, high school art teacher. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Katie McCoslin, kindergarten teacher at James Byrd Elementary School.
Thank you.
Molly Onomastiko, teacher at Schipensburg Area Intermediate School. Congratulations. Thank you for your hard work. Marsha Schumus, she is our new elementary instructional math coach this year. Thank you. Jamie Shirr, high school English teacher. Congratulations. Thank you. Jamie Shirr, high school English teacher.
Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Stewart, high school science teacher. And Katie Watts, middle school science, technology, engineering and math, arts and math teacher. So, Mr. President, I want to thank these teachers. I know they're coming forward and they're thanking me for giving them the award, and I'm sure they thank the foundation. But really, I'm thankful to you because without your extra effort and applying for these monies to do something above and beyond in your classrooms, they wouldn't happen. So I really thank you for taking that step. Mr. President, next, I'd like to move around on the agenda. I did add item 3 CE. Our social workers are here this evening, and they're going to give us a brief presentation regarding some funding that we have for homeless. Schipensburg Area School District will receive an award in the amount of $54,613 this year from the Pennsylvania Department of Education under the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund to support homeless children and youth in the school district. So I'm going to ask, they're going to come up and tell us a little bit about how we're going to utilize that money for those students.
Thank you. We're going to start by just introducing ourselves, and then we'll go through what the program looks like. My name is Janelle Carbaugh. I'm a licensed social worker at the high school. And one of the big things that I'm working on this year is our gray matter program, working to help students who are experiencing anxiety and depression and helping to offset that for future situations. So that's me at the high school, and I'll turn it over to Tabitha.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tabitha Curtis, and I am a district social worker. However, I work primarily with middle school students and also in the newly implemented STAR program at the middle school, which stands for Schipensburg Therapeutic and Academic Resource Classroom. I did want to just let you know, in front of you, we did give you all a little bit of like our social, there's a social work goodie packet in front of you. And in that packet, there is the school social worker brochure. So one of the new things of bringing on a couple of different social workers is the big question is what is a school social worker? So we put together this little informational packet, which we like to share with you today. We're not going to go over everything, but in the packet, it talks a little bit about our role and what we can do to service students, staff, and district employees as well. So I just would, I would ask you to just kind of reference this on your own personal time. I would like to point out that something that social workers do that sets us apart from counselors is we do conduct home visits. And Amanda here is going to talk a little bit about that process.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amanda Sigrist. As you've probably guessed, as we have gone down the line by grade level, I'm the elementary school social worker. So I am a licensed clinical social worker, and Tabitha and I are both new to the district this year. So I spend my time in between the four different elementary schools here within the district, primarily working to support and assist families who are in need of additional assistance. So working with them to identify their needs as a family unit and help connect them to resources within the community to meet those needs while also collaborating with them to meet the needs of the student that we are seeing within the school setting. So as Tabitha mentioned, one main part of our role as social workers is home visits, and we do those for many different reasons, but ultimately, our goal in those visits is to meet the families where they are and to come alongside them and have a conversation about how we can work together to meet a student's needs. So we do visits for a number of different reasons. Just to give you a few examples, one may be if we are experiencing some type of behavioral issue for a student in the classroom that we want to discuss and really get a parent's input. Another reason we might do a visit is to get parents' signatures on, for example, permission to evaluate, to see if we can offer any additional supports as a district to that student. And then another example of a reason why we do visits is attendance concerns. So if a student has a large amount of absences or tardies and the administrators or teachers are not able to get in touch with the families, a lot of times, we as social workers will be asked to go out and meet with the family, talk about what the issue with attendance is, and work with them to address that issue and ultimately get the student back in school. So one thing that we have been starting this year that is also in your social work goodie packet is a door hanger. So this is something that basically just says, "The Schipensburg Area School District Social Work Department is trying to reach you. Please contact us at your earliest convenience." Just because a lot of times when we do visits, parents aren't there. So we recognize that a lot of our families are busy. A lot of times when we're visiting during the day, maybe they're at work, maybe they're sleeping if they work night shift, and we might miss that opportunity to connect with them. So this door hanger, we staple our business card on the bottom and we hang it right on their door, and it serves as a very visible and present reminder as soon as they open the door, as soon as they come home, oh, I need to contact them. And it really has been successful just within the last few weeks that we have been using them in getting parents to get in contact with us, which is ultimately our goal. So that is a very brief overview of our role here in the district and the services that we provide to our students and families. We really are thrilled to have grown as a department from a department of one to a department of three this school year. That was a significant change and one that we were very excited about. We certainly will continue to collaborate and work together to meet the needs of our students and families. So we also specifically wanted to talk today about a program that we are implementing for some of our families. So Janelle is going to introduce that for us.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you all for listening and taking the time to hear what we have to say. One thing that we're very excited about this year is that we got a grant through ESAR. So let me tell you what ESAR is. It is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief that Dr. Supple had mentioned earlier. We got a grant and over $54,000, and we're planning to use that through a program is what we're calling it. It's called HOMES, and it's helping others master economic struggles. So the primary purpose of this program is to help our families that are deemed homeless or displaced or doubled up in some capacity where they're not currently in a primary residence. The purpose of that is to really offer these families services and programs to help them be self-sufficient and be able to manage their finances or obtain jobs or housing or whatever it is that they're struggling with. So some of the things that we're doing, the Kickstarter one that you have in front of you, is our holiday party that we have in December. So the goal for this one is to really get families together and just support one another and get them introduced to our program. And I'm going to stop talking because I could continue for a long time, but I'm going to pass it back over to Tabitha, who would tell you more about the program.
Absolutely. So the purpose of HOMES is to really, again, as Janelle said, connect families in temporary housing situations with resources with the long-term goal of them overcoming these situations. So we are targeting the family unit as a whole through this programming. So for parents, we're looking at addressing, we're looking at implementing some educational programming that might look at parenting needs, budgeting, career and interview and resume process, housing navigation, maybe some credit recovery programs like that. And with the children, we're hoping that we can encourage relationships between the children in these social situations to kind of rely and depend on each other for a little bit of support since they are going through similar experiences. So we intend to encourage participation in this programming by eliminating barriers for these families and providing incentives. So we are offering, as a district, transportation, childcare, dinner, and also care packages for those families that are in need of those items.
So as Janelle said, we are kicking off the program in December with a holiday party. We really couldn't think of a better way to start things off than with a meal and presents and holiday activities for the family. So that first gathering is going to look a little bit different and really focused on celebration. And then in January, we're going to be starting our monthly meetings. And for our first meeting in January, we are going to be having a community resource fair. So one of the main priorities of the HOMES program is to connect our families with resources within the community. And oftentimes, how that works for families is they have to reach out by phone or email and then wait for a response, which can be timely just because of the need within our community. So for January, our focus is really getting a number of our community resources in the room so our families can go around the room and get a number of different supports and assistance from providers all in one night and all in one place. So another large component of the HOMES program is, like Tabitha mentioned, we are focusing on providing an incentive for families to participate. And we also want to provide families with opportunities in which they can do things that maybe they wouldn't otherwise be able to do. So we are going to be having an end-of-the-year activity each year of the program where if families attend a majority of the events throughout the year, they will be eligible to attend this end-of-the-year activity. So we are dedicating a portion of our budget to that in order to, like I said, give families the opportunity to make those memories. So we're still brainstorming ideas. We welcome any ideas that you guys may have, but we are focusing on, again, those things that families may not otherwise be able to do, like a day of movies or an amusement park or something along those lines. So we are really looking forward to getting this program started in December and also having the opportunity to see it develop and grow over the next three years. So with that, we very much thank you for your time, and we wanted to turn it over to you to see if there was any questions or feedback or anything else that we could provide for you.
Well, thank you very much, what wonderful work you are doing and to obtain the grant. I'm just wondering, can you tell me what the homeless population is right now in the district? And are you seeing an increase of homelessness in the district right now?
Yeah, so our homeless population, it shows there. I mean, we have families that are doubled up with friends or other family members, some that are living in a shelter. We have a new community care family shelter in Schipensburg, and we have seven families living there currently, so it's at full capacity. And then we also have families that are living at motels and hotels in Schipensburg and families that are displaced by Schipensburg that are being taken for the day. So yeah, I definitely think, I think it started, you know, kind of slow. We hit a peak and then we're kind of at a smaller level now, but it's holding steady. I think we have roughly eighty-seven kids that are homeless. So we're looking through that and really hopeful to help these families, you know, get back on their feet and identify the struggle that they need to experience. Thank you.
What was that number again? How many kids or how many families?
I thought it was eighty-four, but I didn't want to be quoted, so, but it's about eighty-seven kids. So family-wise, it could be more like thirty families, twenty families with multiple kids.
Okay. You knew I would ask questions, right? So this is like a lot of our other ESAR funds, this is a three-year kind of project, right? So you have three years to spend the money? Okay. And a lot of what you talked about was programming and sort of interventions here at the schools. Can you use the funds for things like a deposit or a first month's rent to help a family actually get housing? Or does it all have to be like in-school program?
No. We did a lot, a specific amount of funds. We, I can have it off the top. Approximately, we did a lot of funding for incidentals to use that for three years. And that might, we might put that towards first month. It could also just be groceries, gas, depending on the needs of the family, but we did act to those.
Okay. So like you could even like furniture and stuff to help a family sort of get settled?
Yeah, we do have some amazing resources for Schipensburg that we would probably outsource for those needs too. But yes, absolutely, we could put money towards that.
And another thing we also want to be mindful of is assisting as many families as possible with this grant, honey. So putting money towards a first month rent, we discussed that that would be, in a dream world, absolutely, we would. However, we might not only be able to do that for a limited amount of families. So we will probably be focusing on some of those smaller purchases again to cover and assist more families with the grant.
Awesome. You made my day. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I think the goal is, you know, very creative ideas with use of the money. And I know one of the goals is to, with these families, as much as possible, to be able to make them feel like there's some normalcy in their lives, and these kids with, there's some normalcy in their lives. So we appreciate the work that you're doing. It's so wonderful to have three of you. And I really credit the board for that and their acknowledgement as we go through the budget process of, you know, the many needs that we have here in the school district and how those growing needs or those needs have grown and so must our support. So we thank you.
We thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, moving on with the superintendent's report, I would like to invite Ms. Melissa Hughes, and she's going to speak to us. Ms. Hughes is from PFM, and she's going to speak to us a little bit about debt service.
I know, always a very exciting topic, but I am very happy to be with the district today. I'm here on behalf of PFM, who are the district's independent municipal advisor. You may be more familiar with my colleague, Jamie Doyle, but we have worked with the district for a very long time. I'm going to speak from the handout that I put in front of you. You want to find that and pull it open to the first page? I'm going to start with some good news. And that good news is that interest rates are incredibly low right now. If you look at that graph on the top of the page, this shows the municipal marketplace data index. So that's the index for municipal bonds, just like you might be familiar with the treasury curve for taxable bonds. This is the one for municipal bonds. And you can see those gray bars show the lowest rates it's been and the highest rates it's been for each of the thirty years of that curve since 1993. The red line is the average. You'll notice that's about in the middle, and the blue line is where we are today. It's not at the very all-time lows, which were set in August of 2020, but it's very, very low compared to historic averages. The bottom of the graph on that page, you can see how rates have trended over time. That big spike at the left-hand side of the page was when the markets basically froze when everyone shut things down and went home for COVID. The municipal marketplace was shut for about three weeks totally and five weeks you really didn't want to be doing anything unless you had to. But then things normalized, and since last summer, rates have been very low. They're a little bit higher, but still very low compared to historic averages. The next page is the district's debt summary. The top half of the page shows the payments that you owe to your bondholders and noteholders if you did nothing. The bottom half of the page- The bottom half of the page shows those same payments if you did nothing, net of state reimbursement, because you do get a pretty good amount of reimbursement on your 2017 and 2020 notes of your own and from the 2021 note that the Career Center had. Okay? That's pretty good. You'll notice there beneath that line that there's a line labeled call date. So that lets us know when there might be an opportunity to refinance these bonds. And you can see three of your four notes, we could refinance anytime. One of them has a make-whole call, so that would, can't be refinanced for savings, but it's pretty short, so that's okay. And you can see at the bottom of the page, on the right-hand side, if the district did nothing, it would have roughly $10.8 million of principal left to pay. I'm going to skip ahead to the next page. I'm here tonight to talk about potential new money borrowing. And anytime we talk about new money borrowing, the IRS just doesn't let municipal issuers go borrow money just because we feel like it and rates are low. They ask you to ask yourself three questions, and those are the reasonable expectations tests. First, do you have a reasonable expectation that you'll spend 85% of those bond monies within three years of settlement? Second, within six months of settlement, can you enter into a substantial binding obligation to spend 5% of the proceeds? That's not spending 5% of the money, getting a contract to spend 5%. Usually that's something like your architect's contract. And then finally, can you, will you proceed with due diligence to do the project? In other words, don't just like go borrow the money and sit on it for five years. It's not the end of the world if things get delayed a little bit. We had lots of clients who got projects delayed last summer on account of COVID. You know, when they were able to, they kept things moving. So let's look at some numbers. Now that we have that framed in our mind. On page five, this is an illustration of roughly just shy of $10 million borrowing. In column three, this is your local effort if you did nothing. And notice, we went back a year and left 2021 on here. The district had a big debt drop-off, so drop-off in payments between '21 and '22. Okay? That's important to kind of keep into consideration because we understand from talking to the administration, you've kept that slightly higher line item in your budget. That means you have some capacity in your line item for payments. Column four, this is what's called a pro rata rap. We're having lower payments there until your debt drops off and filling it in with higher ones after that. We're keeping a final maturity of 25 years, which is, and we're illustrating that final maturity for two reasons primarily. Number one, you have, the projects you're considering have a useful life. In other words, they'll be around long enough to support a fairly long-term borrowing. And number two, when rates are really low, it makes more sense to borrow longer and save your shorter capacity for when rates go up. And we expect that they will go up. You know, if you're following what's going on with the Federal Reserve, you know, we expect over the next three to five years, rates will go up. So you can see in column five, that would be the expected or anticipated local effort after the new borrowing. So with the addition of the $310,000 of debt service, still would not be back up to the 2021 budgetary levels. I'm going to pause here to see if there's questions on what I've talked about so far before I talk about timeline and next steps in process. All right, then I'm going to flip ahead to the next page. This has a sample timeline, and you'll notice that everything we have on here says or later. We can always move slower, but this is kind of the timeline that we've illustrated. So I'm here tonight to make an initial presentation to the board. If you were so inclined, you could authorize us to proceed by passing that sample motion And what that does is allows us to start getting the paperwork in order. Because when you adopt that, we would come back to the next meeting, which here we've illustrated as November 22nd, for a maximum parameters resolution. You may have done maximum parameters resolutions before. That's where you set out the maximum principal amount in each and every single maturity, the maximum final maturity, and the maximum principal amount in aggregate. So because that maturity-by-maturity analysis, that maximum parameter schedule ends up being about 15% to 20% larger than what you're ultimately going to issue, so we'd come back with a $12 million resolution. And the district has done this before. And then we would go in the spring, because we're basically done with doing bond deals for this year, unless you're well on your way already. But in the spring, potentially as late as April or May, but earlier if we felt like rates were going too far the wrong direction, we would have a sale and lock-in rate. And then 35 days later, we could settle, which means that's when you get the money in your account and you can start writing checks. Anyone have any questions about that?
Melissa, just a couple of items.
Yes.
If you look at the maximum parameters resolution and later on in tonight's agenda, item 5D, we have a resolution similar to the sample motion that you have above. If the board passes that, can you walk us through, what's the purpose of that?
What's the purpose of the sample resolution?
Correct.
Okay. The purpose of the sample resolution is because in order to adopt the maximum parameters resolution, there needs to be an ad that appears in a paper of local circulation three days in advance of the meeting to comply with the Local Government Unit Debt Act. That's the law that governs local debt issuance, like the school district's debt issuance. And so that means we're going to spend a little bit of money in order to place the ad and get that taken care of. So that's you all saying, yes, I know that we're going to have an ad in the paper and that will enable us to potentially consider a maximum parameters resolution. So that's the purpose of this sample motion. We don't want to spend any district dollars until y'all give us the go-ahead.
So that sample resolution or item 5D sort of, to some degree, puts the wheels in motion, but...
That's exactly what it does.
But it doesn't obligate the district quite yet. And what I'm getting to is you have here, obviously you advertise, you have your three-day wait period, and then the, if we had a meeting on November 22nd, that's when the board would pass a maximum parameters resolution, which then would in essence say to PFM, you've got everything you need to go, keep an eye on the market, and when those parameters are met, go ahead and borrow the money.
That's exactly it. That is the official debt in prying action. So that's when the, that's when the school board says, yep, we are ready to incur debt.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, I'll invite Mr. Damian Spar, who is going to give us a brief presentation. Damian is from SiteLogic, and he's going to talk to us about the middle school project we are considering.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Damian Spar, Program Manager at SiteLogic. With me is Melissa Kohlstock. She is also a program developer for our firm and has been in front of you before, talking about your programs. In October, in October, we presented some information to the administration regarding the middle school, and tonight we'd like to go over that in a little bit of detail to show you. Is it not on? Sure. We wanted to be able to go over... I'm not usually told to talk that loudly, but apparently I'm not talking loudly enough, so forgive me if I get a little too loud. Tonight, we're going to go over the information about the middle school program and how that could be the first part of the school district-wide improvements that you've been contemplating. What we'll do tonight is we'll talk about the base scope of work and the scope cost, which is targeted between funding from the bond discussion that you just heard and $4.3 million of Esser funds. We'll talk about potential alternates that you may consider designing now and potentially building during the process. We'll show you some drawings as to where the scopes of work are located and talk about schedule and next steps. Many of you have seen the base scope summary for the middle school before, and I'll reiterate them here. The building additions include a new classroom wing with approximately six classrooms and support spaces. The cafeteria gets expanded with a renovation to the kitchen and a creation of the serving area. Building renovations include interior building-wide finishes, updates to floors, ceilings, and walls, replacing classroom marker boards and chalkboards, replacing all window and storefront exterior ventilation systems, exterior masonry restoration of brick surfaces, replacement of 14 air handlers on the roof, replacement of hot and cold water pumps, the air separator and expansion tanks, elimination of electric heat in the media center and replacement with gas heat, replacement of classroom unit ventilators with new, updates to bathroom fixtures, and the installation of fire suppression or a sprinkler system in the building. Site renovations include upgrades to parking areas at the bus loop for 37 spaces and the parent loop for 34 spaces, and bus loop improvements at the middle school, including the parent drive. Using, and this says 14.5, but it should say 14.3, it's my error there, using a target budget set at under $14.3 million for the middle school base scope. What we looked at are budget targets for building additions of $5.8 million. That's all project costs, construction, and professionals and permits and any furnitures, fixtures, equipment, et cetera. Building renovations at $6.25 million is the targeted budget. Site renovations with a targeted budget of $2.15 million or a base scope total of 14.2. And you can see here, that budget target contemplates just under $10 million in bond funds, which was just outlined for your parameters resolution, plus $4.3 million in Esser funding. We anticipate that the site renovations will be decreasing with the removal of costs that were in there for the high school loop scopes. For the entire set of budgeted targets, we will be looking to reduce costs while maintaining the desired program and the desired renovations noted in the base scopes. This illustration shows some of the priorities that we had at the middle school for additions. I'm going to point out, using a laser pointer here, where our classroom addition is along the top-left side of the diagram. That's where the six classrooms and support spaces sit. Also, the kitchen serving area and the cafeteria extension occur down here at about four o'clock on the drawing. The very bottom, we have some other things that are going to be part of our alternates. One is a bus canopy out here, and then some administrative renovations, which could be also part of alternates. What you're seeing over on the far right is a performing arts addition, and that performing arts addition will be shown as an alternate, and I'm going to explain when you may elect to examine those alternates, should that be something that rises to the level of priority that's desired. This diagram shows the bus loop, the new bus loop at the middle school here toward the top of the page, and then a parent loop that gets constructed around the school toward the bottom here, as well as the additional parking lot areas. Parking lot E, which is up here, is proposed in the base scope at the bus loop. Parking lot G expansion is proposed here at the parent loop as well. And this parking lot F over on the right is proposed as an alternate for consideration. So let's talk about the alternates. At the top, you can see our $14 million target base scope, and the alternates are grouped in three categories. The first two are relative to site and parent pickup and drop-off and bus, et cetera. The second two alternates are related to the administrative suite in the middle school, and the last two alternates are related to that priority two, performing arts addition, and items related to the music program at performing arts. So the first two include addition of the bus canopy at the parent drop-off, which we have estimated about $700,000. And the other piece, which is kind of site-related, is that faculty parking area of 30, for 32 spaces of about $118,000. Those two particular issues or alternate scopes are relatively easy to design, and in fact, the parking area, it may be, it may be wise to design that now so that you could potentially install that in the future, even if you did not elect to do it now, so it's part of your land development plan that will be submitted by K and W as a part of this process. So from our perspective, those two alternates are relatively easy to consider. They can be done at any time, although I think particularly that parking area might be something of importance to design at this time. The second two alternates in the group are for the renovation of the administrative suite at just over $375,000, and some work at the exterior wall to insulate it and refinish it at about $175,000. These two project scopes can be done now, or they can be done with later projects in the program, perhaps as you're doing work at the high school, or really at any time. Those two things really want to go together as a scope of work. If work at the administrative suite, which was considered a reasonably high priority, but not the highest priority, are considered of value at this time, they could be asked to be designed as alternates. The last two are related to the performing arts. The performing arts addition is just under $3 million, and then there's replacement of music, storage, and casework. That addition, while it could be included if you wish to fund it at that level with the middle school work, can easily be done when you're doing additions, if you're doing something at the high school later, which is part of the long-term program to continue improvements. So what we wanted to do was create a series of these choices that you could make now or might be easy for you to make later and still get an economy of scale with another project. I think my only significant advice is it may be beneficial for you to design that parking in area F at this time. parking in area F at this time, since you're going to be designing all of the other site work around the middle school at this time. Let's talk about project timing. We are in November, and at this time, we're confirming the scope for design. We're confirming that target budget. In front of you will be contracts for hiring of the architect and civil engineers in EI and KNW, and the construction manager in Site Logic, and then ultimately, direction for design by KNW, EI, and Site Logic for the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, to design this work so that we can price it and ultimately start building that as early as the summer. The phases of work are really three pieces. The construction that could occur this summer, we would put together for pricing in the spring, and that would allow us to do a little bit of work this summer, because what we want to do is as much of that renovation as possible without disruption to kids and educational mission, and splitting it over two summers is easier than putting it all into one summer in 2023. The other opportunity is if we can buy some things earlier, we're going to avoid inflation, and it'll be easier for us to spend our money and get more for our dollars. The building additions and then the remainder of the renovations are likely to begin work in the fall. And the reason that I say likely to, as opposed to giving you an exact date, is that we need to work through permitting and make sure that we can design as quickly as we want. Ideally, we want to be bidding that work and awarding it in the summer so that it could start in the fall. Those additions, taking, if you imagine them taking 13 months from August through August, will allow you to have children in those seats for the beginning of the 2023-24 school year and have that cafeteria expansion completed so that you can relieve some of the capacity concerns that you're seeing right now. We have noted that, and a lot of that renovation work will also, I should note, occur in the summer of 2023, again, so we're not disrupting classes. There ideally will be work that occurs over the school year, done in ways, whether that's nights or weekends, et cetera, so that we're not disruptive to the educational process. The site work I'm showing as summer 2023, if permitting allows and bidding allows, we may be able to get started on that sooner and put some of that site work in place this summer. And that would be beneficial if we did some things like stormwater detention, or even if we really had the best-case scenario, were able to put some of the loop road work in and not put the final paving on it until we finished our other work in the summer of 2023. While that is a goal, until I see that permitting will allow us to do that, I would set your expectations that the majority of that work will happen in the summer of 2023. There we go. So upcoming presentations, decisions, and approvals. For design and permitting, you're going to see project process and progress presentations that can occur monthly. It can be done in this forum. However, the board and the administration would like to see that. I would suggest that if you're going to ask for any alternates designed, you may consider those in December and let the team know not later than January. Project bond funding discussions and decisions should be ongoing through the spring, and that matches up with what you just heard from PFM. Board approval of selection of other minor professionals, such as the geotechnical engineer, environmental consultant, surveying, et cetera, would likely occur in January. So it'd be more minor professional comment or contracts to award at about that time. Throughout the process, and I'm suggesting that this might be like a February, April, and June timeline, you're going to see significant information on design progress and estimates for the work so that we can keep the project on budget and on schedule. And when it comes to awarding contracts, so the significant commitment of money to construction, there will likely be two times that that occurs. One for an award for the work that would happen in the summer of 2022, potentially in April, and then another sometime in the summer, but not later than August of 2022, for the new construction, site work, and remaining renovations. And again, as I've noted, I think this schedule provides an appropriate timeline, although now a timeline that we should pursue diligently to complete our work in summer '22 and '23 and allow for those new spaces to be complete at the start of the 2023-24 school year with expanded facilities to relieve those current capacity concerns. With all that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I got a question. This picture, it's just a concept. The engineers are going to take care of the bus loop. I'm on page six. Because the only reason I'm asking, I had brought my daughter to school and just getting the cars going to the senior high school is lined clear back at the softball field on Row Road, and then down Volvo Drive into the back. If you're going to dump all the middle school from down off Everly Drive back out onto Penola Road, that's really going to get congested in a hurry. So the engineers will take a look at that?
Yes, sir. And in fact, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the engineers to reiterate some of the information they had looked at. That congestion, I think, may have been something that we mentioned before, and I think part of the solution to that was the creation of that the parent loop being so long, as you can see with coming off of the road and then really snaking back along here to the other side of the middle school. That creates a significant number of cars that would be on that road as opposed to being out on the roads that you're talking about. I would ask them at the earliest, as soon as the board would want to have that discussion, to be able to come back here and demonstrate to you how that would work or how we would face that in.
Well, and I guess my thing is you're going to have crossover traffic there, because you're going to have the high school parents coming out, and you're going to have crossover coming out of, to get on Row Road from the middle school people. It's going to, I mean, that's not going to be, I guess, always a red light's an option there, but.
Well, I think part of what we have to look at is having parents come in certain ways to get into certain places, which is a lot easier said than done. But I'd like to take that back to the civil engineer and be able to allow them to present to you how that might work and continue that discussion. Thank you. That's a good question.
This is Dwayne Burt. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the presentation. And then I'd like to ask, if you would, in just a few minutes, for you and the superintendent, really, to address the two main building additions in the base scope of work, really under the heading of why, to just explain to us one more time, and really, every time we look at this, just to go back to understand what the two main additions are really designed to accomplish, starting with the cafeteria expansion, with the renovation of the kitchen and the serving area. Why do we need that? What's changed, you know, either from when the building was designed, what its capacity was designed for, those kinds of things? And then perhaps more for the superintendent to talk a little bit, either one of you, really, but to talk about and to explain again, the classroom wing particularly. What are we going to do in those classrooms, or why do we need them? Or more specifically, what can we not do today, but what this building project in terms of classrooms sets us up to be able to do for the future that we can't do today? Thank you.
Well, if you don't mind, Mr. Burt, I'll get started, and then I'll allow Mr. Sfar to join in at any point. Specifically, taking a look at the cafeteria area, and Mr. Sfar, if you could highlight that for us, you'll see that there's a crosshatching area at the top of that cafeteria, and that crosshatching area really demonstrates new real estate. So anything that's not crosshatched down below that is the existing size of our cafeteria today. So that cafeteria was built in a time where you would put as many students as you could into a space, and at the same time, when you had simple serving lines, you sort of, kids ran through multiple lines to get their meal. The problem with that is that we have, at the middle school, we have anywhere, depending on, you know, population or class sizes, which fluctuates, anywhere between 750 and 800 students in the middle school. And there are three lunches, and usually by grade level. So you could be looking at, again, depending on class size, somewhere in the neighborhood of 250-plus students being in that space at one time. The way that it's designed currently does not promote effective trafficking. In other words, students getting in and out easily and students going through lines easily. What that also doesn't promote is some of the other eatery options, which we would like to provide students, where they have more diversity as far as their lunch and some options that they can choose, which you can't necessarily do when you have to run all of the kids through a line because you're limited in space and you're limited in trafficking, and you're trying to get them through in a very short amount of time. So that is one aspect of it. The other is with regard to COVID and what we've learned about spacing children is that, you know, we need more room to be able to accommodate kids in the cafeteria area. Currently, we're utilizing three spaces for students to eat lunch. We're utilizing the cafeteria area. We're using the B gym, if you could highlight that, Mr. Sfar, or the auxiliary gym up there. There we go. We're using the auxiliary gym as a cafeteria space, and then also, we're using the auditorium as a cafeteria space. Not by any means preferred, but what we have to do. Now, is the new space in the cafeteria going to provide enough to allow all of our students to be six feet apart? No, no, it wouldn't do that, and that would create a cafeteria that would probably be double the size of that. But what it does allow us to do is space students out more. It allows us to provide programming, and when I say programming, referring to eating and the programs and the options that are available to students, as well as trafficking and having more space. So that's sort of a summary of the cafeteria area. Of course, that would include an updated, modernized kitchen area as well. But going to the classroom space on the far left side of the diagram, these spaces, you'll see that some of the classrooms are designed to be able to be split into smaller classrooms. So one of the questions that I get in not only this district, but others that I've been in, is people in the community who are very familiar with the facility and have grown up, and the facility's been the same for many, many years, they wonder, well, you know, what's changed? Why all of a sudden do we need more space? Do we have more students? That's part of the problem. I would not say that our population has grown dramatically, but it has grown slightly. And, you know, one slight growth from year to year can add up. But I would say more so it's the services that we offer, the programs that we offer. We heard the social worker, our social workers this evening talked to us about the STAR program. And the STAR program is a program, a social-emotional program that we need for our population, and we need to have for our students. But that takes classroom space. When we talk about learning support and the number of students that need learning support, and the classrooms and the teachers for learning support, as well as other, you know, therapeutic measures, we have, you know, language support, ESL. So the programs that we offer and that our students need are tremendously different than what we offered and what was needed 20, 30 years ago. So with that means that you need more space. The other parts of this is there's never been a stabilization of staff for the programming at the middle school with regard to core subjects. So there are four core subject teachers for a grade level, math, science, social studies, language arts. At the sixth grade level, we have three teams of four core teachers. So three times four means there are 12 classrooms that you can divide students among. So if you think about your student population, roughly divide them by 12, it kind of gives you what your class size is going to be. Similarly, at the eighth grade level, we have three teams of four teachers, again, 12 classrooms with which we can divide our student population among. Currently, at the seventh grade, we only have two teams. And so what that means is you're taking that student population and you're dividing them among eight teachers rather than 12. So what does that do? That means your class size is going to be more. You're going to have more students in a classroom. And we all know that students learn better with more individualized attention that you can give them. So if we can reduce the teacher-student ratio, that's going to have a positive effect on the education that we provide our students. One might ask, well, okay, why don't you get more teachers? And that's a great question. The problem is, even if we had more teachers, we would not have the classrooms to put them in. And so really, the additional classrooms meets the needs of our students by providing an appropriate program with appropriate class size for all grade levels, and at the same time, also provides the much-needed space for the additional supports, support classroom that we have in our school district and at the middle school. So that's just a general summary of what our motives are or what our driving force is behind the cafeteria addition and then the new classroom addition at the middle school. Mr. Burt, I apologize, because I'm sure that was longer than five minutes.
Perfect. Thank you.
I do have, I don't want to pose it as a question, but it's sort of a question, but I know the answer to it, and I want to make sure that the board is aware of this. So as we talk to, as we talk about the project, and Mr. Sfar outlined the scope and how a reasonable timeline might look like, and we heard from PFM with regard to, you know, Ms. Hughes identified what the timeline for borrowing money might look like. And it appears to me that there's going to be a gap there between when work starts with the architects, the engineers, and the project manager. And when I say work, design work, starting to go out and get permits, there's going to be a gap between then and when money actually hits our bank account if we were to borrow money. And so I want to sort of emphasize that, because there would need to be some money or some funds that the board would need to spend in that time period, let's say, six months, for that work. My general thought, and I think talking with Mrs. Lentz, is that we could utilize money from other designated fund balance categories to basically fund that now, and then when we receive that borrowed money, we can bring that back. Is that correct?
Yep. So within the parameters resolution, we're going to have like a subsection that will incorporate a reimbursement resolution. A reimbursement resolution is something you can take as a separate item, but we're going to put them together. It's done that way sometimes. And what that lets you do, think of it as a doorstop. It holds the door open for you, and that door that's being held open is the ability to reimburse yourself in bond proceeds. So what that does is it goes back 60 days from the date that you enact that resolution, back 60 days, and says you can reimburse yourself for anything you spent from that day, back 60 days. And then it's board reaching at least 18 months and saying, all right, you can go anytime between now and the next 18 months, you can go issue bonds, and then reimburse your general fund from those bond proceeds. And you need that reimbursement resolution, because otherwise, you can only go back 60 days from the day you issued bonds. So we would make sure that the documentation in the parameters resolution is flexible enough to accommodate that scenario.
And while you're there, Melissa.
Yep.
You had, in the presentation you had given, you had reviewed the borrowing laws, the federal tax laws. And so you had an expenditure test of 85% of the proceeds within three years, which I understand, I think that's pretty explanatory or self-explanatory. Item two, you have a time test incurred within six Item two, you have a time test, incur within six months a substantial binding obligation to expend at least 5% of the proceeds. So, I'm assuming that even though you don't borrow, let's say you borrow in May, if we start expending money in December or January for design...
We would have already checked off that criteria.
Correct. Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from the board? Just a couple of things I wanted to make clear that we'd talked about. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anything else from Mr. Swar?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Mr. Board President, I'm sure you'll be happy to hear, I have one more final item, 3C-D, the enrollment report. And if you'll look in your packet, the current enrollment for the district is 3,399. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. 4A is the approval of minutes from the October 18 special board meeting. 4B are your finance reports. 4C, personnel, professional staff. Administration recommends approval of the following FMLA qualifying leave of absence: Malia Deal, kindergarten teacher at Nancy Grayson. Leave is listed. Administration recommends approval of the following FMLA qualifying of absence request: Kelly Ackley, guidance counselor at Nancy Grayson. Leave period is listed. Administration recommends approval of the following professional staff voluntary transfer: Cass Wheeler, James Byrd Elementary Applied Behavioral Analysis Teacher to James Byrd Elementary School Long-Term Substitute. Administration recommends approval of the following contract status for the following professional staff member. Elizabeth Perrin, English teacher. Administration recommends approval of the following new appointments: Megan O'Donnell, long-term substitute first-grade teacher at Nancy Grayson. Tony Rota, long-term substitute kindergarten teacher at James Byrd. Danielle Sergi, Applied Behavioral Analysis Teacher at James Byrd. And I believe Dr. Suppo did provide $71,902 salary for that, if your agenda's blanked.
Mr. President, if you want me to read, I'll be happy to do so. Danielle Sergi, Applied Behavioral Analysis Teacher at James Byrd Elementary School, effective date to be determined at a prorated salary of $71,902. She'll be hired at Masters 45, Step 8. Hiring dependent upon successful completion of all required paperwork and clearances. And that will include a $2,500 sick-day payout to the district that she currently works at.
Thank you. Support staff, administration recommends acceptance of the following resignation: Carrie Hockenberry, part-time head cook at James Byrd. Supplemental staff, administration recommends approval of the following resignation: Kyle Meichel, Shippensburg Area Senior High School's Boys Assistant Soccer Coach. Administration recommends approval of the following new appointment: Deborah Etter, full-time LPN for the Shippensburg School District. Following coaches have received satisfactory evaluations. You can see those listed: basketball, wrestling, and swimming. Administration recommends approval of the following new appointments: Ray Robinson, Shippensburg Area Middle School Girls varsity basketball coach; Kylie Miller, Shippensburg Area Middle School JV basketball coach; Jan Psalm, Shippensburg Area High School Assistant Wrestling Coach; Timothy Davidson, Shippensburg Area Middle School Assistant Wrestling Coach. Administration recommends approval of the following volunteer coaches: Devin Fraker, middle school and high school wrestling; Miranda Rhodes, cheerleading. Administration recommends approval of the following ESRS after-school program appointments. You can see those listed there by building. 4D is agreement with express healthcare staffing. 4E is the resolution in support of the PA school funding litigation for fair funding. 4F is your memorandum of agreement for the health tax program. 4G is request to form a fashion club. 4H is the proposal with Sunrise Computers and Electronics as amended, the Dr. Suppo went over. Does any board member want to take any consent agenda item from 4A to 4H separately?
Mr. President, I've got just a quick question about H. Can I ask that before?
Yes, go ahead.
It needs to be on the floor.
Go ahead, Don.
I'm just curious how portable the system will be. In other words, we set it up in here, what's it going to take to tear it down and move it to another building? Does anybody...
Yeah. Well, first of all, I just want to make it clear, the adjustment to the resolution, it should indicate not to exceed $28,000. With regard to portability, that was one of the things that we were really concerned about, and I actually think Mr. Burton had brought that up a while back as we were considering this, because my understanding is, years ago, there used to be, the board meeting would sometimes move to other schools to encourage participation from the community in other locations, as well as other events. So, portability is really a part of the design of the product, and so, I think we have something that will really help facilitate that. It's prepackaged, it comes in its their own cases, it's really completely independent from any of the sound systems within the, not only this auditorium, but also with any of the other schools.
So, in other words, if we did want to move that equipment around, we won't hear later that it takes too much effort to do so?
Not for me, Mr. Hilbinger.
Mr. President, can we take H separately?
We can. Any other items to go separately 4A through 4G? Hearing none, is there a motion approved 4A through 4G?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Goats, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Suters, roll call.
This is Erica Berg.
Erica Berg, yes.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. Is there a motion approved 4H?
I move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Bard, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hilbinger? Discussion? Dr. Goats? Or you just wanted to vote separately?
I just need to vote abstained, because there's one or two.
Okay. All right. Roll call?
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Abstained.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Hey, clarification, what are we voting on? I can't get on the slides, what we're talking about.
Mr. Scott, we're voting on the purchase of sound equipment to be utilized at board meetings and be able to livestream board meetings.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm definitely...
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mrs. Erica Berg.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried eight yes, one abstention.
Thank you, Christie. For the purposes of our public and those who are watching on YouTube, we have an action agenda, and we have a discussion agenda. The action agenda are items that were added to the agenda by the administration, or were on the previous discussion agenda, and now up for vote. After that, we'll move on to the discussion agenda. Those items are not to be voted on tonight, but are meant to carry over to the next agenda for the action, and also for board members to have any discussion tonight if they wish. 5A is the agreement with Capital Area Intermediate Unit for Educational Services. Is there a motion approved 5A?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Goats, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Burke, discussion? Roll call?
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mrs. Erica Berg.
Yes.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. 5B are expulsion waivers, there's two, case number 2021-2022-1, and 2021-2022-2. Is there a motion approved 5B? Motion made by Mr. Suters, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bard, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mrs. Erica Berg.
Yes.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. 5C is the new venue for board-approved field trip. This is a field trip to the Whittaker Center for August 9, 2021. Is there a motion approved 5C?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Bard, is there a second? Second by Mr. Suters, discussion? Roll call?
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mrs. Erica Berg.
Yes.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. 5D is the appointment of financial advisor and bond counsel, which refers to what all we heard about tonight. So, I'm going to have to go off the stuff, I'll go ahead and read that.
Thank you, Mr. President. With regard to appointment of financial advisor and bond counsel, administration recommends approval of the following: the board of school directors of the Shippensburg Area School District does hereby authorize the administration to work with PFM Financial Advisors LLC as financial advisor, Eckert Siemens Sharon Emma Law LLP as bond counsel, and the local solicitor in conjunction with the issuance of general obligation bonds series of 2022 in the approximate amount of $9,995,000 for the purpose of funding the new money needs of the district via a competitive internet auction.
Is there a motion approved 5D? Moved made by Mr. Suters, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mrs. Erica Berg.
Yes.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
I thought we just said we weren't going to move or vote on the discussion agenda tonight.
This is not on the discussion agenda, this is 5D action agenda.
Well, my 5E in the action agenda says approval of new boy transportation.
5D.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. And then, 5E is the approval of new boy transportation van driver, is there a motion approved?
Move to approve.
Moved made by Mr. Bard, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Goats, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Jim Bard.
Yes.
Mrs. Erica Berg.
Yes.
Mr. Dwayne Burke.
Yes.
Dr. Nathan Goats.
Yes.
Mr. Don Hilbinger.
Yes.
Dr. Michael Lyman.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Charlie Suters.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Butterball.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. We'll move on to the discussion agenda. Again, these items are not to be voted on tonight, but will appear on the next board agenda. 6A is the PFM debt service present...
Yeah, we, Mr. President, Mr. President, we had this also listed on the presentation side of, under the superintendent's report, and the purpose for that is, while we have the one resolution, 5D, which was appointment of a financial advisor and bond counsel tonight, then we listed on discussion, on the discussion agenda, the borrowing parameters resolution, which Ms. Hughes talked about. So, that borrowing parameters resolution would then appear at the next formal meeting, and that would basically put in motion, or initiate, PFM to then go ahead and start to look for a great rate.
Okay.
That clears up my confusion.
I got a quick question. Do we, you talking about that, do we still got a vote on the middle school project? That was a bond that we just voted for, so we got a vote on the middle school, when are we going to do that?
So, if we look further on in the discussion agenda, you'll see that there's a six, item 6D and 6E. 6D, again, these are discussion items, so they would be on for vote at the next board meeting. Specifically, 6D would initiate the middle school project as shown by Mr. Swar this evening. Now, if there are any changes to that that the board desires, you'll need to let us know. And I should have mentioned it earlier, we also have sent the preliminary proposals from SiteLogic, and as well as the Architects EI Associates, to our district solicitor to review.
Okay, thank you.
I forgot where I was. 6B is the resolution for interim real estate tax assessment. 6C is the memorandum agreement between the district and the Shippensburg Area Education Support Professional Association. 6D is the agreement with SiteLogic. 6E is the agreement with EI Associates. And 6F is a reading specialist teacher at Lord's.
Could I ask a question about this?
Go ahead, Dr. Goats.
So, help me out. It's my understanding that presently, there is no reading specialist at Lord's, is that correct?
Correct, correct. Due to the shifting population, the need has grown this year to provide reading specialist support at Lord's.
And so, then this would be a halftime reading specialist teacher there, right?
Right. And the, to hire someone as a halftime person with those qualifications would be very difficult. So, what we're recommending is, we have a learning support teacher who is halftime at that school, which can provide those supports, so by making her a full-time position, she'll be able to basically, learning support halftime, reading specialist support halftime.
Yeah. And this person, of course, has the qualifications to, you know...
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it has to be passed along the...
Right.
Yeah. All right, so, you know, this isn't anything for action right now, but it's just, you know, I've been made aware that it seems that the demand for our reading specialists has increased considerably, it seems, and, I mean, in the, I don't know, the last year, the last years. And I guess what I'm hearing is that there's a lot of concern that we don't have enough professionals to address all of our concerns. So, this clearly addresses a need at one of our four buildings, but it just, I mean, I'm sure this is on your radar, but it maybe needs to be on all of our radars, that maybe this is something to think about as we come to budgeting for the next year in how to deal with the increased sort of need for the services that reading support specialists provide.
Yeah, and I think well put. A good example of that is this year where we used ESRS funds to create a new reading support, full-time reading support position at the middle school. Again, much-needed interventionist, so we're happy to have provided that. Are there other supports that are needed out there? Absolutely. I would also add, however, that we do have a new reading or language arts curriculum that we're implementing at the elementary level, and so, built within that are also our tiers of intervention, so I think that will also help provide at least the classroom teacher with some additional options for students, but the need is definitely there.
Thank you, that's all.
Anything else from the discussion agenda?
Dwayne Burke, I would just like to add to that reading specialist, reading discussion, particularly in the elementary grades. I too am hearing that we have needs that, you know, perhaps partly, you know, temporarily, as it relates to COVID perhaps, and other needs, but that we have needs that are currently just outstripping our capacity to service those students and to service those needs. Not that it's budgeted or whatever, but I too am hearing, and I thank Dr. Goats for bringing that up.
Okay, we'll move on to... Okay, we'll move on to citizen comments. This citizen comment period is for any other item not listed on the agenda. We do have one person who did sign up, Kathy Runk.
Oh, that's Ruth.
Kathy Ruth.
Oh, I'm sorry. We logged.
It's not my signature, it's hers.
When you said that, I thought there's something wrong there. All right.
Good evening, I'm back yet again. Just wanted to update everybody that I still have not received a meeting, like I discussed about my previous issue with my daughter getting bullied, and the last time I talked to Dr. Suppo at the football game, I explained to him again what was going on. Monday, the principal had sent me an email that she did look at the camera on the bus, and she actually sees, I guess, the way that the, the bus driver was talking towards my daughter, that it was correct, that she is bullying her. She did see it, it's been going on, it has le, it has come down a little bit, because after that I showed up at the bus stop and pretty much told her to stop harassing my daughter, but then again, she slammed the door in my face and took off. I kind of need two things. I'd either like a meeting set up to discuss why this is going on with my daughter, and I've been trying to do this since October 14, and we're almost to the middle of November. That has not happened, or I want her off my bus route. I, I, I can't let my daughter, who is 11 years old, come to you guys again, and I, she wanted to come tonight, but she had homework, and I said no, because last time it was almost 10 o'clock by the time we got home, but she wanted me to plead again. It has to stop.
Mrs. Ruth, I did, after our, after, we had spoken last, set up a meeting, we were able to meet with Boyo and the driver last week. Mrs. Bembo was to contact you so that we could meet after that. Unfortunately, she, she was out sick last week, at the tail end of the week, so I apologize for that, but she will be in touch with you and, and we'll, we'll certainly get a meeting. That was our intent, is to have that already.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to kind of update you on what's going on and hopefully hear something back because, I mean, we're getting to most of the month and nothing seems to be resolved, and I don't think that's fair to my daughter, more than anything.
Like I said, we did have a chance to, to meet with them, and unfortunately, we just couldn't reach out to you, but I'm sure she will.
All right, well, just tell, tell the principal just to go ahead, and she knows how to call me, and if I don't answer my phone at work, she'll leave me a voicemail, and I'll call her back like two minutes, three minutes later, it doesn't take long.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Board of Comments, we'll start at this end. Mr. Hilbinger?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the board for giving me another opportunity to serve with the community and, and this district. I am fully aware that the decision was not an easy one, and as we sat here tonight, I, I listened, I think probably I've listened to the president's charge to the board probably well over 100 times, and I just want to assure everyone that I take that charge very seriously, and will do my best to serve all the needs of all the students in this community, and devote whatever time and effort is necessary to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to the board, Don. Dr. Goat?
Yeah, well, Don, beat me to it, I guess, because I wanted to welcome Don Hilbinger, that, maybe I'll learn, pronounce her name correctly, Hilbinger?
Hilbinger.
Hilbinger, so I had it right, to the board, and also, super great to have Jim back with us, so, yeah, really, really happy about that. That's, that's all, thank you.
Mr. Bard?
I'm just glad to be back in person.
We're glad to have you here.
We're happy to have you.
Mrs. Berg?
I have no comments.
Dr. Lyman?
I have no comments tonight.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. You know, I, as I reflect on listening to the, to the comments, the, the many wonderful things that our social work department is, is currently involved in, I, I can't help but, but, but think about that and, and put, put that in perspective, and, and it's my complete and total opinion that, 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 that department has really grown, you know, from, from the vision and leadership of, of, of one man that, that has served the, the last four years on this board, and, and I'd like to, to, to call his name, that's Dr. Michael Lyman, and I, I thank you for, for your efforts to, 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 to see that vision and articulate that vision and, and to, to see it through to, to what it is today. I thank you for your contribution.
Mr. Suters? I am good as well. Information date savers, November 10 is the Veterans Day Celebration Parade of Honor at the high school.
Say what about me?
Well, Fred, you're not here, I didn't remember, go ahead, Fred.
I've got nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
November 11, Veterans Day, no school for students or teachers. November 13 is the complete works of William Shakespeare presented by the High School Drama Club. November 17 is an Act 80 Day. Thanksgiving break is November 24, two-hour early dismissal. District will be closed the 25th, 26th, and 29th. November 30 is staff development, students not in session. November 30 is our parent teacher conference swap days, and Monday, December 6, is the board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, there's no doubt.
Is there a second?